Good evening and welcome to the May 28, 2013, meeting of the Lake Forest Zoning Board of Appeals. The board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities of the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the zoning board of appeals, the board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The city of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available on the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners and the neighboring property owners and the community at large. So, we'll start with an introduction of board members, starting from my right. Lloyd Culberson, 4th Ward.
Richard Kristoff, 4th Ward.
Sam Ciccarelli, 3rd Ward.
Stuart Dixon, 2nd Ward.
Jay Kennedy, 4th Ward.
Bob Frankson, 1st Ward, and with the city staff tonight is Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development, and Megan Newman, City Planner. The first item on the agenda tonight is recognition of former chairman Rosemary Kerr. We all know the city of Lake Forest has an ample amount of talent to fulfill its various positions at the board and commission level, but rarely do you find somebody like Rosemary that has her level of experience. From her municipal planning background at Harvard University to her real-world commercial lending experience, Rosemary was a perfect addition to the ZBA, which she served on for five years to as chairman. I'm sure the city will be drawing from your experience again in the near future. Madam Chairman, it was an honor to serve alongside you these past two years, and I would invite all other board members to make any comments about her service.
Job well done.
Very well done. I've only been on the board for about a year and a half or so, and I have to say, working with Rosemary was a real pleasure. Learned a lot, and we're gonna miss you.
Your dedication is unmatched, especially when it took you all that time to come in for that one meeting that we had. Unbelievable. Great job, Rosemary.
Echoing the statements of my fellow committee members, really, we were grateful for your service to the city of Lake Forest, Rosemary. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with everything that's been said. It was, these meetings just ran extremely smooth and, really, through your experience and keeping us all on track, so we appreciate it.
And we have a recognition. We don't have the minutes from the April meeting. We'll delay that until June, until next June, July. The first petition on the agenda tonight is consideration of a request for a variance from the front yard setback requirements to allow the enclosure of an existing open porch at 499 Washington Road. The owners are Scott and Sierra Frost. Representative is John Krasnodepski, architect. First ask the board for any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts.
None.
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 Anybody intending to present this evening, I ask you to stand, raise your right hand, and we'll swear you in. Do you soundly swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true, correct, and to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right. Move to the presentation by the petitioner, Mr. Krasnodepski.
Good evening, Chairman Frankson and commissioners. Thank you for listening to our petition tonight. My name is John Krasnodepski. I'm the architect for this project at 499 Washington Road, and I'm joined here tonight by Mr. and Mrs. Frost, and we're here to request a variance to the front yard setback requirement. It's existing 40 feet, and we're asking it to be less than that, 16.9 feet, in order for us to do an enclosure on an existing open porch. I'll start out with some streetscape views. This is a photograph of the street view looking north, and you can see the house to the right. This is taken in the winter, in the dead of winter, a rainy day, so the porch is not visible from this view, although it is behind these evergreen screening landscape right here. So, we're fortunate to have such mature screening existing on the property right now, and really, I think it does help to mitigate any impact that this variance might have. So, moving on to the other view, this is a street view looking south, and the home is on the left, and again, you cannot see it because of the landscape screening that exists. Here are some closer-up views of the home. This is on the property itself, and the porch is on the back of this part of the home where I'm pointing right now. This is a view of the porch on the left, right there. This is a close-up. Our intent is to maintain and keep the roof structure and the round stuccoed columns. We think those are features that are important to the original architecture, and so we're going to maintain those features and work with them and create a very sensitive addition. Here's another view, again, showing a lot of screening on the home. Here's a view from the mouth of the driveway, looking towards the home, and the porch is on the rear there. So, moving on, here's a straight-on view of the open porch. So, again, we're gonna keep that structure. No footprint change occurs with this enclosure, and we're gonna use as much glass and window as possible, so it's very transparent, and really, from a bulk standpoint, it's very minimal in its change. This is just a view of the front door. I'm showing this because the column is a feature that reoccurs throughout the home, so we felt that keeping those columns on the existing porch was important, and we're able to work with that and integrate our new design with the existing very successfully. This is a plot of survey. It's not too clear, so I'll move on to a site plan that we did that's a little bit more graphically readable. So, I'm gonna point out, you can see there's a very nice row of evergreen screening, very tall, very dense, as you can see in those pictures taken in the winter, virtually making this porch not visible. So, I've hatched in the area that we're discussing, and that's the porch footprint, so again, no change to the roof line, no change to the footprint, and we would like to do this in order for us to remodel the kitchen and make it bigger. It's a very small kitchen in the home, original to the house in size, and so that's a feature that the Frost have lived with for many years, have been in the home for several years, and it's really, one of the really shortcomings in this converted coach house. This home was the coach house to a larger home to the north on College Road, and so these were built in 1903, and a subdivision was created in 1987 to create this new lot and a single-family home. So, that new zoning law created a hardship and made the house, which was conforming at the time, into a non-conforming situation. So, we think the combination of, you know, the new zoning code and the non-impact, really, to the footprint, we're not asking for variances in any other way from a bulk standpoint or any other setbacks, so we feel this is a fairly modest request, and we think it's a very successful improvement to the home and something that the Frost will be able to enjoy, really make this home a really nice house. Something that's really been lacking is the kitchen and breakfast area. So, we're hoping that you'll see that there's a lot of positives to this project and that you'll approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to staff's report, Ms. Newman.
Thank you, Chairman Frankson. As was noted, this is a request before the zoning board for a front yard setback variance. The existing structure, as was noted by the petitioner, predates the city zoning code that was adopted in 1923, and it's clearly cited closer to the street than what is currently permitted by code. It's a unique request in that it's a request to enclose an existing structure, so there's an existing porch and existing roof, and this request simply adds walls and windows to enclose that space as year-round living space. That change in the massing does require a zoning variance. The design of the enclosure is scheduled to be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission on Thursday this week, and in general, the use of windows does preserve the openness of that element on the house. There are findings in support of the requested variance in your staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Moving on to questions from the board, I'll start from my left, Mr. Kennedy.
I don't think I have any questions. It is kinda close to the street, but the fact is, you're not, you know, you're not really adding any bulk or anything to it, so, same direction.
With the enclosure, any issues with regards to drainage from the roof? I recognize the fact that it is an existing roof line. Any potential drainage issues that could occur as a result of enclosing the space?
No, because the roof line, as you said, doesn't change. There is a gutter and downspout system that's going to be maintained. There is no increase in impervious surfaces. It is already paved underneath there, so from an absorption standpoint, there's no change to the amount of impervious surfaces. So, our plan is to continue the drainage situation in its current state, which is splashing to grade.
Got it.
Thank you.
Just to clarify from staff, I noticed that as of the date of the report, there were no correspondence, no letters from any other homeowners. I assume that's still true today. Is that correct? Anybody correspond to the...
Staff has not received any correspondence, although there will be an opportunity this evening for public testimony.
Just one question. You mentioned this is going to be an expansion for the kitchen area.
Correct.
Will there be any mechanicals that would penetrate the roof or side walls?
No, no change to the roof structure right now. There is a chimney that could be maintained, but no additional roof penetrations.
And nothing on the side walls either?
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, technically, there's a bit of a change in mass, but there's really no change in footprint?
That's correct. No change in the footprint. Goes from a completely open porch to a mostly, I'd say, three-quarter glassed-in porch. I brought this elevation onto the screen so you can get a feel for the amount of glass. There are double-hung windows in character with the rest of the home, and we have these panels on the bottom, and that detail is consistent around the porch. So, looking at the back, again, you could see, we tried to introduce the windows more than solid wall, just for the transparency. It is a breakfast area, so it makes sense to have it as transparent as possible, so I think that does help to make it more see-through and more successful as a lighter element on the home.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to public testimony. Anybody wishing to speak on behalf of this matter? It'll be rather short, and there was no cross-examination filed, so we'll come back to any final questions from the board, if you think of any others. No?
No.
No petition or rebuttal, I assume?
No.
And any staff response to public testimony? Probably not. All right. So, that kinda leads us up to a final board discussion and comment, if anybody would like to opine on the matter. None whatsoever.
I support the petition.
Lloyd, do you wanna host a recommendation?
Yeah.
Careful what you wish for. Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval to the city council of the requested variance at 375 Washington Road to allow the addition of a front porch, enclosure of a front porch located no closer than 16.9 feet, or sixteen, just under 17 feet from the setback.
Very good. Is there a second? I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Oh, right, right. Scott mentioned, I think you mentioned it's 375 Washington, but it's 499 Washington. I know there's two petitions, same, similar address.
We can make that correction.
I think they caught that, the crack staff caught that.
We can make that.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, is a consideration of a request for variances from the front
and side yard setback requirements to allow an addition at 375 Washington Road. The owner is Ann Louise Brown. The representative is Bob Rollison, architect. And do we have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts?
No.
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 Anybody wishing to speak, raise your right hand, I'll swear you in quick. Do you soundly swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Presentation by the petitioner.
I'm Mr. Bob Rollison, and I'm with Door 13 Architects, who are representing Ann Louise Brown and her family. We are asking for a zoning variance for her property over at 375 Washington. This is the existing plot of survey, which, I apologize, is hard to read. We supplied here a site plan, which I think shows it a little clearer. The property south is zoned R4. The front yard setback is required, 50 feet, whereas we have only 3310. The north side is 20 feet required, and I think with our overhang, we have about 3'7". And as you can see, the setbacks already, the heavy red line there is showing what the setback requirements would be. Here we're showing a proposed site plan. The addition would be right over the existing garage or the existing footprint, and the addition would be limited to that existing garage. Here's our proposed west elevation. In just about the garage doors there, or the proposed garage doors, you can see the outline of the existing garage and structure, that a garage, as well as a second addition in the back, a bulletproof story addition's done, well, actually, there's no record of it, but we, based on materials and what we've kinda found, looks to be maybe early 70s or, at the earliest. This is our proposed north elevation. Again, the height of the garage, existing garage, I'm sorry, it's tough to read, is just about halfway through the lower sash of the dormer windows there. Here's our proposed south elevation. No real difference here, except for on the far left there, you can see where the garage is. The second floor's been added. Here's our proposed floor plans. So, on the second floor, there, we're adding basically two bedrooms for an expanding family. Again, same footprint above the existing garage. We did look at other locations, and I'll show you later in my presentations, but one of the advantages of doing it over the garage, the garage actually is a lot lower than the rest of the house, and so our proposed second floor addition is, it's actually 21 inches below the existing second floor. So, bulk mass, everything else has been sort of brought down, and as you see in the top section there, the existing second floor in the back is still present. We're actually breaking out that bulk. So, our addition, the second floor addition is actually 6'6", only 6'6" over the existing first floor of the main house. This house is originally Stanley Anderson. There's certainly some historical significance here. We have already been through, or in front of the building review board. Design was well-received, and now we're here tonight to hopefully get your approval. Here's some photos of the existing, the home in sight. The garage in the upper-right hand photo there shows the existing garage. It was just sort of tacked on to the original design and is, in our mind, a bit out of proportion with the rest of the home. This is a, I see a aerial photo. The two blue diamond shapes there are showing the garage addition on the left and in the back, another one-story family room that was added some time ago. This was image showing the neighborhood conditions and photographs from different sites as you walk around the home. Please stop if anybody... And this is the neighborhood context with the other homes there. So, it's on Washington Road there, right at Rosemary, and it's corner lot. These are some of the other areas we looked at. In the lower right there, first and foremost was put an addition there. It would require a foundation, a lot more work, and also be outside of any existing setback requirements. The other was to put a second story on the first addition, or the second addition in the back there with the family room on the far right of the photo, and the third, of course, is the one we've brought you tonight. This is showing some of the details of the existing garage and the original design next to it, so we're hoping to sort of improve the proportions of that existing garage at the same time and get them additional bedrooms and areas that they need. Here we're pointing out some of the different design features we took from this, from the existing home and implemented into our proposal. The dormers for existence, we're actually gonna remove at least the windows and sashes and put them on the new street elevation of the home. Brick, painted brick, some of the timber details you'll see in the next slide. So, this is a timber detail that we actually borrowed from the existing garage, the original garage, as well as over the back entrance to the kitchen here, and we've continued that up here as well above the reused double-hung windows and the attic fence, which are throughout the home's elevations that we're maintaining as well.
Thank you very much. Moving on to staff's report, Ms. Newman.
Thank you, Chairman. This property is on the corner of Rosemary and Washington Roads. It is in the R4 zoning district. As the home exists today, it is non-conforming with respect to all setback requirements for the R4 district, and it was constructed prior to the application of the R4 zoning district in this area. The current request for an addition above the existing garage requires two zoning setback variances, one from the side yard, 20-foot side yard setback to the north, and the other from the 50-foot front yard setback to the west. As was noted, the home is, was originally designed by Stanley Anderson, so in looking at ways to expand this home, the petitioner explored several different alternatives. Some of them were, had less encroachment into the setback requirement. Ultimately, the petitioner moved forward with this particular plan, given the minimal impact to the existing structure and the amount of, the least amount of demolition to the original home. As was noted, the building review board forwarded a recommendation to approve the design of the project and the overall addition for the new expanded second floor. You may have noticed that the requested setback to the side is slightly closer than what the existing plot of survey notes. In looking at the architectural detailing for the addition, the addition of a more detailed eve is proposed to be consistent with the rest of the architecture. The setback is measured to the edge of that eve, slightly reducing that setback to the north. As of the date of writing the staff report and the meeting, we have not had any correspondence with neighbors, but there is a positive recommendation noted in your staff report, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Fair enough. Moving on to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Culberson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask the petitioner, are you demolishing the entire garage?
No. We will be demolishing the entire roof structure, which also is the ceiling in the garage, the existing drywall ceiling, and then building on top of the existing two white brick walls.
Two white brick walls, but the front elevation is not white brick at this moment in time?
No.
It's wood.
Just the columns you see on either side.
Right.
And then once, and then once, once we remove that front wall structure, which, you know, I think it's probably just plywood with the siding on it there, at least to my knowledge, there's no...
So, it'll be, it'll be built on existing foundation?
Yes.
Okay. What happens, there's a maple tree on the left corner of that garage there, and a lot of it overhangs the current ridge line of the garage. By going up, I don't know how many more feet you're going up from that roof line, it strikes me, it's gonna interfere with the branches on that maple tree. Has that been taken into account? I'd ask that of staff as well.
Me first? Yes, I mean, we're gonna go to every extreme to protect that tree here there on the side.
That tree is gonna have to lose some branches, isn't it?
I think it's just one of the lower ones, and then there's another much larger tree, I believe an oak in the back, which we won't be affecting at all.
That's consistent with the city arborist evaluation. That's consistent with the city arborist evaluation, that there would be some pruning that would have to occur of that, of that tree. But ultimately, the expectation is that that will be, that will not be removed.
Okay.
Hold up here on the right side photo there.
Yeah, I can see it.
Which tree? The one just to the right of the second dormer up there.
On the...
It's against the, the small one.
In the right picture?
In the center of the garage there.
It's all leafed out right now, but...
Yeah, the center of the garage, correct.
The dormers you're losing on the subordinate mass there, I assume obviously there's going to be some roof repair there.
Yes. Yes, those dormers are being removed.
Right.
The new structure of the attachment and proposed, second floor will actually take those off completely. But we're going to take the, those are original windows, the long windows, and those will be going into the new street facade.
The street facade of the new structure.
Right, above the garage door.
Right, exactly. Okay. Is this, is this, this is white painted brick or is it what, and so it'll be done to match existing?
It will.
All right. Is this part of a larger renovation project with respect to the exterior of the home? Is this part of a larger renovation project or refurbishment of the exterior of the home?
Well, we are talking about, there are some other elements that were, I don't know if I can say destroyed in my mind, but the bay window you're seeing here on the south end actually used to be a much flatter tin roof that I think when another bay was put on just to the north of the front door, I think they pitched it so that they could put a cedar roof, single roof on it. And then found that this one didn't match, they went around and, so those are things we'd like to improve on, but...
The reason I asked the question specifically is just, I noted it looking at the, at the, at the structure, which is a, a structure of some distinction, that there's some brick repair that could be done on, on the knee wall in particular and other aspects of the...
That's, we've already applied for permit.
Okay, great.
That's been done and...
And painting the stucco or whatever the material is on the north gable of the primary mass. Yeah, right. It's pictured in the right, yeah. Yeah.
Actually...
It'd be a pity to, this is just my suggestion or my opinion, but it'd be a pity to invest this kind of money in restoring such a historic home and you'll have a brand-new garage structure that might stand out against some of the other parts of the house that could use a little bit of sprucing up.
There are a few of them, yeah. And my clients actually are getting married there in June, they're having a wedding on the...
Congratulations.
So we are planning on getting started on the outside probably before the inside.
Great.
And the other structure actually, or the other area that we saw for improvement was on the chimney itself. It used to have sort of more detail oriented with case brick up top. Sometime over the years, I don't know if that painted over or it crumbled the detail, but we're going to look to seeing what the costs are. But definitely there's some improvement there as well.
Thank you very much. That's all. I just want to clarify, the building review board has approved the plans that you're coming up with, right? So the really only issue here is the zoning. And the only thing that's really changing is that one little, what do you, what you referred to as a gable or some kind of a, not the ridge, ridge line, that's sticking out between. That's the only issue.
Correct.
That's really changing the, where it is and the...
Had the, when they'd done the addition on the garage, had they copied the same overhang that was on the rest of the house?
That would have been done at that time.
Done at that time.
Okay. I have no other questions, thank you.
Okay.
Bob, with regards to the roof mass, have you accounted for drainage with the new pitch? Is that being taken into...
Yeah, I mean, actually, there's copper gutters that are there now that are basically open and just reused. And there shouldn't be any, the roof inside is, you see there now, just being raised.
Sorry, question. I kind of had the same question that Lloyd had. And it's outside of the context of this petition tonight, but I, I'm just out of curiosity, are we going to see a new garage and the existing home pretty much stays the same?
Yes. Yes. There are some improvements to the master bedroom that were changed earlier on that it was a renovated bathroom and such at that point. And then there's going to be five kids in the home, so we're looking at maybe doing some improvements in the basement as well.
Okay.
Nothing to the exterior, that's...
Okay. So here, here's my question. I'm, I'm not inclined to make a big deal of it, but it, I think it's a fair question. You're the, to the...
South.
South? Well, the, the existing setback from the property line went from the closest spot was like four feet. And now it's going to move in to two feet nine, close to the property line. Why, why couldn't have that, this been accomplished in the same footprint of that four-foot setback?
Well, the foundation actually is. Is this the overhang of the roof that's...
Well, that's, that's the question. I mean, I...
It's the overhang of the roof that's expanding. One of the details there, we've got it outlined with the A in the upper right there, and you can see in the lower left is a blow-up. It's a limestone, basically keystone, or I'm sorry, it's not limestone, it's concrete. And that's the overhang and the detail, the same concrete keystone that we're trying to replicate.
Let me put it another way. Is, is this kind of design, I'm not trying to feed it to you here, but was, was this not going to be accomplished had you not gone to the two-foot, nine-inch setback versus the four-foot? I mean, that, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Thank you, yes. That is correct. It could not be accomplished.
Could you elaborate just maybe a sentence or two on that?
Okay, yes. That's correct. It could not be accomplished without further encroaching on the side yard setback.
Where are we? Public testimony. For the brief. So we'll move on to, there's no cross-examination. Any final questions from the board? Any petitioner rebuttal? Any final comments from staff? Okay, we'll move on to final board discussion, comment. Anybody want to talk about their final thoughts? Great thoughts? Pining on the economy, whatever you'd like.
I, I would just reiterate my thought that this would be an opportune time while we're building a new structure to perhaps spruce up the existing one so that there's no stark contrast between the new and, and, and the old and...
We went more into that for the architectural review board. I apologize now for not doing any more of that.
I would agree, that's not our job here tonight, but you, you know, it...
I agree and I appreciate the chairman's indulgence in letting me stray from...
Any comments down here?
No comments.
I mean, I'm not, it's, it's going to have very little impact. It's an improvement to the street. I wish that I had seen something come back within that four-foot footprint, but the BRB is happy with it that, I guess it was unanimous. So I'll, I'll go along with it. If anybody would like to make a motion?
Get the address right.
We have to, we have to have a new motion master.
Yes, I'll, I'll move to recommend approval of the variance as requested and to recommend approval to the city council of the variance to allow the second floor addition. As noted in the staff's comments, to be located no closer than two feet nine inches from the north property line and no closer than 33.5 feet from the west property line, as shown on the site plan that we were provided at the property at 375 Washington Road. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to it.
Sam.
Sam seconded it. All's, all's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Lot of paper tonight. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a request for a variance from the side yard setback requirement to allow a second-story addition over an existing first floor at 1251 Windwood Drive. The owners are Rowan and Annette Carroll. Representative is John Clare Architect. We'll start with any declaration of conflicts of interest or ex parte contracts. Anybody have any?
No.
Okay. I, I have one. Mr. Clare has done some preliminary evaluation on my principal residence. We don't have an ongoing matter, but we have had no discussion on this petition whatsoever. So I'll, I'm inclined to continue and be impartial. Anybody wishing to talk tonight? If you'd stand, raise your right hand and I'll swear you in. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Very good presentation by the petitioner. If you give your name and address, or you're the owner.
Yes, my husband and I own the home, 1251 Windwood Drive. I'm Annette Carroll. Thank you for hearing our petition. I think I just want to do a bit of a quick overview and it's easiest by viewing the picture that's right here. We bought the house and it'd been expanded on two times before we bought the house. I can almost give the same presentation as the first one this evening. It was an old coach house. It was, a lot of things were added to it before we bought it. And in essence, it was built on a slab. It has no, has a very unusual setup where it looks like a large house. It is a large house, but the living space is actually quite limited, limited. And there's actually a large swimming pool on the left that takes up a lot of the space. But it has no basement, so it really doesn't have any hangout place. And when we bought the home, it was my husband and myself, so that the idea was different. We've since adopted an older child. We now have a teenager and she needs a place to hang out with her friends. And there's a very little bonus room upstairs and it opens into this very big flat roof, which we have never used. We've never gone out. It's a pain in the neck. It gets a lot of leaks. It gets a lot of snow. It's, you know, in essence, a flat roof. It would make a huge difference to us to just close the flat roof. Basically what it does is it expands a, a small bonus room into a really a nice size playroom, which would make up for the fact that we don't have a basement. So that's the idea. John, we'll talk in a minute about the design, but the idea behind the design was to, to make it simple, to make it modest. In fact, it's hard to see from here, but there is basically a hanging chimney that just hangs there. And in fact, our neighbor, there's only one neighbor can actually see that part and actually cannot see it very well. This is a view from his home. He approves it and there's a letter. If you don't have the letter, I have copies, but that's his view. But what it is, is there's a chimney that hangs there and it just hangs by itself. I mean, it's attached to nothing, because I think it's going to fall down. Again, it looks like the house was never quite finished. So what we think this will do is actually make the house look better, make it look like it's finished. John will talk about the design, but the design, we've worked with the city and it's, in essence, bringing the gabled roof, just pushing it out a little further. It will look pretty much identical and it will just give us more space and give us more storage space as well, which again, we're desperately needing. Turn it over to John.
Good evening, board members. Do I need to swear in separately or did I...
No, you're good.
Okay. Thank you for hearing our petition. I'll try to get through it quickly. This is a plat of survey indicating the house. The other darker shade area is the driveway. We're about 175 feet off the road and we are heavily landscaped. The proposal is shown in the black square, which is above an existing family room that is, for the most part, non-conforming. This document from 2002 shows a setback of 20 feet on either side and 50 feet off the back. Those have since then changed and we currently have 50 feet off of both sides and 75 off the back. So there's actually a portion of the home off the rear that is also non-conforming. And that 75-foot setback pushes almost to the rear of the house at this point. So again, that was a change that took place prior and was not a result of this particular homeowner. Again, the site, landscape plan shows a significant amount of landscape screening. At this time of year, you don't even see it from, from the road. Existing house is a frame colonial, actually quite elegantly done. But there are some large areas, as the client mentioned, the swimming pool is a substantially large portion of the living space. The garage is also a substantially large portion. And then upon entry, there's just one big living room in the center of the house. And off to the, by the garage and off to the right of the house as you enter is a relatively modest kitchen breakfast family room. Currently, that's a space where the adults hang out, but as Mrs. Carroll announced, they, they have a daughter and she needs a play area as well for friends to visit where she feels comfortable. And that's the space that we're looking at that's above this existing family room. So that hanging chimney, as Ms. Carroll discussed, is really a chimney that meets code that has to extend beyond 10 feet from the two, the highest ridge, two feet higher than the nearest ridge, two feet away. It becomes a bit of a tower off the back of this flat roof to whoever designed it to achieve that. So what we're looking at doing is building over this existing flat roof with an addition that is relatively roof-like. It's just an extension of, of the same gable that you see here. That's the existing gable before you hit the flat roof. So we would be extruding or expanding that roof line and those exact same windows to extend out over the top of, of this flat area that you see there. As I mentioned, the site is quite wooded. These are views. The bottom one is from standing on the balcony looking to the neighbor, the nearest neighbor to the west. The other is below that looking to the rear yard. So in essence, what we have is first floor plan here. And again, you can see the, the relative size that the swimming pool, the garage and the living room take out of the living space. The existing second floor, and if you recall the eleva, I'll present the elevations, but they are more in roof space with dormers. So they become relatively compact. And then this little swoop that you see here is more or less the circulation path that's taking place through the existing, what they're using for a playroom now. And that playroom encompasses everything from casual and cluttered office uses. They have pets, they have two cats and a dog, and this is where they play with that, with the animals. And, and the daughter uses this for a lot of her dance, doing her homework, entertaining her friends. And it's, it's relatively small. What, what you also notice when you visit the Carols is that closets are, are full. Garages, this is a little dark to perceive what's happening, but there's a lot of, in fact, I don't know if they even park any cars in the garage, but it's a three-car garage, has a lot of storage in it, in the closets, and even some of the bedrooms are, are used for storage. So the expansion of the space is going to take place, again, an extension of the existing room over the top of the flat porch. Kind of a side-by-side comparison, the upper being the existing, the lower showing the roof that's consistent with the roof of the house, and a small dormer that's consistent with the dormers that are over the garage. This is sort of the approach that you see, although it's a straight-on elevation, and you don't see the L shape that the house presents itself to when you're approaching. But again, the large three-car garage with just the dormer spaces for those bedrooms above. Rear elevation. Again, the upper is the existing. You can see the chimney sort of towering over. The proposal is to extrude or extend the roof, put a small shed dormer to either side of the chimney, and make an elegant design out of that feature. And if you look at the west side, which is the side facing the only neighbor that is affected by the addition, you really don't see much of a change at all. Again, it's the upper being the existing. You see the existing rail. That gable element is about twenty feet, plus or minus, further back than the face of that west, face of that garage. And what we would do is extend those same windows out, take a section of the balcony and make a little Juliet balcony out of that, and add small dormers to accommodate windows that would be necessary for that space. From a standpoint of appropriateness of location, we think it screams appropriate. It's a flat roof. Currently, it has problems with leaking and is a constant maintenance issue with that. That roof framing is ready-suited for floor framing, and we feel it takes advantage of that space. If you don't mind, I'll just, I'll try to wrap it up. We think it completes an otherwise awkward design with a chimney. We believe it has very little visual impact to the neighbors, the neighborhood. It doesn't impact light, vent, health, life, safety, fire, any of the issues that are consistent with the criteria in the zoning. And we ask that you grant us approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to staff's report. Ms. O'Neil, Ms. Newman.
Thank you, chairman.
It does say O'Neil here on this matter.
That was my fault for typing my maiden name in the report. This is another request where there is no footprint change for the zoning variance. The variance is required due to the increase in height above an existing one-story area of the home. As was noted, the building review board did recommend approval of a building scale variance for the addition. The building review board recognized the limited views of the addition from the approach as well as from neighboring properties, and also acknowledged that the scale of the addition was appropriate to the size of the property surrounding homes, and that the standards for the building scale variance were met. As was noted by the homeowner, there is a history to this house. It was a coach house to a larger estate. There were various additions that were constructed over time. And the home was built prior to the application of the R5 zoning district requirements. Based on the findings that are presented in your staff report, staff is recommending approval of the project. I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Moving on to questions from the board. Either side, who would like to start? No questions. I have no questions. I just had a quick one. The BRB, the bulk requirement, I'm just curious what, couldn't have been that far over bulk.
I don't remember the exact numbers. The existing house is significantly over the square footage for the lot, but the amount of increase was relatively small.
Oh, I know. Okay, so it was over anyway.
Yeah, the existing house was over. I think it was a two percent increase in the end.
Never mind. Okay. No other questions? We'll move it on to public testimony. No public testimony, no cross-examination filed. Any final questions from the board? No rebuttal, I assume? No staff response to public testimony?
Chairman, if I could just mention that there were two letters of support from neighboring property owners in your packets, for the record.
Two letters of support, no negative letters. Okay. So that brings us to final board discussion comment editorial. It appears as though there's not going to be even one sixteenth of an inch difference between the footprint, the way it is, and the way it's going to be. And I think this looks like an improvement to the property, so... I do, too. Yeah, it's a natural roof, I mean... Natural. And if you drive back there, I mean, it's, this is so far back that it's almost impossible to see the... And landscape, so it's just perfect. Garden back there. Flat roofs aren't very attractive anyway, so this is gonna... With a lone chimney. This is without question an improvement, so that would be my comment. Okay, so we could belabor this for another twenty, thirty minutes, or somebody could make a motion?
I move to recommend the approval of the variance as submitted, based on the findings on page two of the staff report dated... Dated May twenty-eighth for the property of one-two-five-one Winwood Drive, that the new addition be no closer than thirty-three feet to the west property line as shown on the site plan provided in the board's packets.
That's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Just do second it this time. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All's opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Moving on to opportunity for the public to address the ZBA on matters not on the agenda. That will be short. Any additional information from staff?
Is there anything on the agenda for the future, for June?
Or is that too far out in advance? Will there be a June meeting?
We will take a look at petitions that have been submitted and be in contact with the board with respect to the next meeting.
Okay.
And I congratulate Commissioner Frankson for his first, Chairman Frankson for his first meeting.
And I'll second that. That's fantastic. Very well done.
Well done.
Well done. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Is there a second? I'll second that. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
I like that.
Very efficient.
Good job. Good job. Three deals, one hour. Three deals, one hour. About a thing. About a problem.
Why didn't know there was a pool? Where's the pool?
Apparently having that much space. Love the monitor.
I think you're going to catch your performance.
And I have to say, the notes on an iPad work. You pinch in, you move around. It's totally...
As long as you have a very large package, then we have to start using a Dropbox.
Oh, that's...
I like writing. Yeah, yeah. June stood for me. I can tell you right now, July is not going to work. Last Monday of July, I will not be there, so, but I can do it.
See you, Sam.
Guys, take care, Sam. Jane, take care. Okay, so are we looking for Jane? Are we looking at Jane?
I don't think we got, we're worried about Thursday night's meeting.
July second, Stu. Can you think of any items? I can't think of any items. You know, I'm just so like, what's right in front of me?
Second, let me say, there's nothing.
Do that, write up for the bicycle master plan, make sense. If they're accepting, that's one motion.
Yes.
And the ordinance will actually update.
The master plan is referenced in that.
Right, so we're actually updating the comprehensive plan with those goals, but then it also alludes to it by reference. So the acceptance is just a motion, but the other act takes up ordinance.
Yes, and now they have to wait first round of help.
Yeah, and I kind of went, I mean, it is one that maybe they're going to go, oh, this is important enough that we just want to wait and then see if we get the comments and...
I've gotten a few positive, like, yay, glad it's going forward comments.
Well, I think, and I do know, I was going to have the inspectors take around, at least David Moore would like the hard copy, because I've kind of been lobbying to say...
You know, don't they also get a hard copy?
You know, someone who don't want it, and I get that, which, I know.
Right, and I will be careful on that to say, well, if you read it...
If you're a pro, but, you know, that wouldn't be... I think the middle goes down first, is that right? There's a little button somewhere. I have heard that it's dark up here now. Because of the light is blocked, and I don't know...
Well, have you used that? Have you been up there? You use those screens? It's like, there's a lot. I like it, I don't think I don't like it.
But I don't know where to put stuff. Yeah, that's, I've heard that, too. I feel that way on our table.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to try and...
We just take his kind of little stuff. What about that email? Did you send any mail forward to him?
I did, but...
I want, what I wanted to respond to him right then is, why can't you just email her right now? He clearly emailed me.
I was trying to catch him, but I didn't actually get him to drop.
Do you need yours? Well, and Moore asked me if John was still on the building review board, and I said yes. Because I don't feel like I can say no until it's official. So then I felt like I was lying.
Well, you know, and what's interesting is that if you read the ethics ordinance, you can't present before another board of commissioners.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I thought of that, but then I listened to the...
Because I thought, I thought it was okay, so long as it's not their board. No, that's interesting, because at the APA conference, that question came up, and the person doing that session, remember, thought it was contrary to our practice. They said a board member could present in front of their own board.
Well, we had a problem with that, and the council erred specifically in this front. Our ethics ordinance are stricter than the state. We had a city mayor come before the building review board and close the project. And that was what drove our ethics ordinance in. I'm pretty sure you can't appear before any board of commissioners unless it's for your personal property, the way ours was written.